Terry Gordon.
That's our murals.
I'd like to call to order the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for February 2nd, 2016. Invite you to stand with me if you choose while Commissioner Williams provides invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
Bow with me, please. Our blessed heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here and consider the business that's presented before us. We 'd ask the Lord that you give us the judgment that we need in order to consider these things and do what's best for the people of Bowling Green. As we anticipate the coming of the storms, we would ask that you watch over and keep and protect each and every one of the citizens that we have in Bowling Green, as well as those emergency workers that are out trying to take care of us and will handle the aftermath of the various storms. All this in Jesus' name and for His precious sake, we do ask. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill is absent. Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here, and Commissioner Hill is attending government training and out of town today. Thank you. On our awards and recognition section, want to acknowledge two recent retirements. Jeff Lashley, Public Works Director, retired after 25 years. Been through many, many iterations within Public Works, but left us as Public Works Director. And wanted to also acknowledge Dudley Porter as a Senior Parks Facility Maintainer. After 24 years, he started as a custodian in Parks and Rec and made it through the ranks to Senior Facility Maintainer. So, we wish them both well in their retirement. So, congratulations to them. And then, secondly, on behalf of the city, we want to thank the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for the recent grant to the fire department, more than $17,000, to obtain a simulator to help people train with the work of putting out fires with a fire extinguisher. So, thank you to them as well. Mr. DeFebbo, or any other awards and recognitions, I'm sorry. All right, Mr. DeFebbo, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. About 10 days ago, the city of Bowling Green, our community, was hit by one of the largest storms in recent history. We had 12-inch event, more than 12-inch event. The city, as well as our partners in the county and state, were involved in removing snow over probably a four-day period, a total event. I thought it'd be important to ask Bobby Phelps, our operation manager, who's responsible for overseeing our excellent crews, who did an excellent job, to briefly go over with you and the public what it takes to battle a snow event of that magnitude. We did learn some things from the recent snow event. We learned that we wanted to improve our communication with the public in terms of what routes they may exist. Now, on the website, we have new information about routing for our citizen. But Bobby is going to come up now and take you around what it takes to fight a snow event in our city. Bobby?
Welcome, Mr. Phelps. Glad to see you here.
Mayor, Commissioners, Kevin, thanks for having me here. First off, I want to thank not only my guys and you all, but Fleet, our Fleet Division, supported us throughout the snow by keeping our equipment up and running. Brent supported us with a couple of his guys, because during the snow, we had some trees that started dropping limbs and trees failing and stuff. So, we called a couple of those guys in to help us get the trees out of the road. In your packet you have, we've supplied you with what our guys use as a, the snow routes. This is what they use out in the trucks. They carry it with them. It's for reference. It has A, B, C, and D routes in it. A lot of people, I don't think, maybe realize that our A routes is our emergency routes. It's routes that we use. We decided its main entrance is off like state roads and things like that that we feel is, in emergencies on that would, by cleaning them off, would give access to police for even the citizens to get in and out. The B routes are basically school bus routes. That street's not covered in A routes, but some of those are. But the B routes would be the school bus routes that they travel, going to city schools and things like that. Our C routes is major thoroughfares in the subdivisions. So, if it's not an A, B, it would be a C. The D routes would be like a non-priority, like a cul-de-sac, a dead-end street, something like that. It'd be low on the list. Not to say that we're not concerned about it, but with a city that's 38 and a half square miles in size and has 271 miles of city streets, we do this work with 24 people and eight large trucks and two small trucks. And so, it's quite a task to get over to the city and provide everybody the same amount of service and all that, but we work at it. And take, for instance, the snow the other night. We come in Thursday night, 11 o'clock. It was raining. Forecast, we watched three or four different news stations, websites, local weather, stuff like that. So, you know, it's a pretty good decision to send out a half a million dollar worth of equipment, $105 a ton material, and 24 guys who goes were pretty well. Nobody else wants to go. So, to be able for the citizens and other people to get around. Just like the other night, 11 o'clock, when we started, it was raining. We tried to get a layer of salt down underneath the ice before it happened. That way, it wouldn't adhere to the asphalt. So, they started running. About 3 o'clock, it turned to ice and sleet, and then started slushing up. And at 6 o'clock, it turned to snow. Then, it started snowing so fast that we couldn't, we just couldn't keep up. So, in something like that, I had the guys, and they know, to go back to the A routes and continue plowing, treat those streets so we can keep them open. The sad part about that is, until the event's over, we can't really make any progress. So, once we get the As done, then we can continue on to the Bs, Cs, and Ds. You know, that's, for a normal snowfall, two to three inches, it's not really a big issue for us. But when we get 12 inches, it hurts us. But we, you know, we run 24/7, around the clock, while most people sleeping and stuff. We're hustling trucks. We got wrecker services on the phone dragging them out. We had two inches worth of trucks, got off the road, didn't do any damage, but we got them back on the road. Nobody got hurt, no damage to equipment. So, but that's pretty well in a nutshell what it amounts to.
Great job, Bobby.
Well, did an excellent job. Fantastic.
We appreciate it. The guys appreciate the support we get from you all, from Kevin and everybody in the citizens. You know, it's, we really truly appreciate. One thing I didn't, I didn't go over, in your packet, you have a picture of this, our whiteboard. That is how we have our snow removal structured, with the guys, assigned trucks. Because the guys are running around the clock, him in and out, Gary and Ryan are in and out, this is our communication to the crews. So, we communicate pretty well. We get good support from everybody, and we're appreciative of it.
Bobby, it was, you know, you and your guys and everybody that chipped in and helped did a wonderful job. I mean, I got a few phone calls, but I think there are people, you know, having this information now on the website where people can look in and see that whether they're on an A, B, C, or D route will make a little bit of difference. You know, everybody's concerned about with whatever it looks like right out in front of their house. But, you know, as you said, this was something that was very unusual, to get this much snow. And the way y'all fought through it, I was just really impressed.
Well, it's not that we want to miss people. And occasionally, we will miss people. We make mistakes, brother, else, and trying to keep up with the spreadsheets and the trucks and guys trying to navigate through the different work zones, the ten work zones. And I don't really know how many names of streets we got, but you can refer to that spreadsheet. It's several pages long. You know, these guys run hard, long hours. Like in this last snow of 12 inches, they have to navigate the streets by the signpost on the side of the street because it's so deep that they can't see the street. They can't see the ditches and stuff. So, they do a pretty good job with it.
And one thing that a lot of people don't understand, too, is when the plows go down the street, it's going to make piles in front of your driveway. We hate that, but they can't lift their blade and put it back down each time.
Another thing that, when we treat the street, it's only one pass down the street because we get both lanes when we're spreading. When the guys start plowing, it's two passes. So, that automatically at least doubles your time because they got to plow the right lane, the left lane. They gotta, they've got to, in their mind, try to figure out a route through these zones where they're not twisting and turning and backing up. So, that, you know, like I say, at least doubles. And a lot of times, people will say, well, you know, we've seen plows run around town with them up. They're not plowing the streets. Well, we have a lot of state roads that go through town. We have to travel them roads. We don't plow the states. The states don't plow ours. The county don't plow ours. We don't plow theirs. So, we have our own responsibilities. And I think sometimes, people may just see the truck.
Sure.
They may not, you know, read on it, or may not understand. And so, that's what Kevin and I have talked about, is trying to educate the public, getting on the website. Kim has worked on the frequently asked questions and things like that. So, hopefully, once we get out to where people can see it, they'll be better to understand of what it takes to get it done.
How often do you think that you're going to be updating the Priority Bs, the school bus routes? Is that something that's done?
We update those, well, we update the spreadsheet at least once a year.
Okay.
Now, if something comes up in the meantime, we will update it then. But it's at least once a year. We work with Mike McLeod on the school bus routes. When we revised it last year, we got with PD and FAR and asked them about their input on it. And because they never know where they're responding from or going to, they didn't feel like it would make a lot of difference with them because their trucks are equipped with chains, so is ambulances. They have the chains that drop down. So, what we did is, this is what we, Public Works, tried to determine what is best for the city from our input, you know, like if we was going to have to go to the hospital, or we was going to have to go to work, or some kind of emergency deal.
A couple of points to add, what Bobby said. We're into continuous improvement in all departments, including snow. This year, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, Bobby, we added three more trucks to routes. If you remember, we did a peer-to-peer review with the people from Colorado who recommended some changes. We also are adding, as Bob intimated, GPS technology to help us better track. And I think you mentioned the improvements to the website to help people. The next frontier is to be, have our citizens be able to track trucks in real time through GPS, but that's a different frontier. We're talking about the proper balance of trucks to demand. We were thinking about adding possibly a truck over the next couple of years to increase our ability to meet demand. We don't want to over-truck and overpay, but I think we're a couple of trucks short of the proper amount for all the routes that we have. So, we're aware of that, and we're working on, and again, we want to thank Bobby and his guys who are out there while we are all at home. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any comments, Mr. DeFebbo?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. First item is approval of minutes for the regular meeting on January 19th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Paragon. Any discussion of changes? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Every meeting, we, every regular meeting, we try to provide an opportunity for public comments. Have a comment on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. This would be a time for that. And I think, Mr. Snodgrass, you're the first one up. Come on up. Steve Snodgrass, South Park Drive.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Steve Snodgrass. I'm a resident here in Bowling Green at 1006 South Park Drive. Many of y'all probably know that as the old address of the historic location of the O.M. Grove Dairy Farm. Staff, Commissioners, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing this time and your meeting for citizens such as myself to address this body. My remarks will be very brief and to the point. Back in August of 2009, our Walnut Grove Neighborhood Association got together and discussed a couple of issues that were concern, of concern to us regarding Edgewood and South Park Drive. The first issue was the speeding traffic on Edgewood and South Park Drive. I'm very happy to report that this issue was addressed. And over the past couple of years, working with Chief Hawkins, there have been additional speed limit signs installed, and the focus on patrolling this area has made the public very aware that the speed limit needs to be observed on Edgewood and South Park Drive. So, thank you for your attention to that issue and that matter. The second issue or concern was a request on how to get on the so-called list for a sidewalk. Our Walnut Grove Neighborhood Association requested the project application form, the petition form, and we collect, actually collected signatures on petition form. This has been back in '09 now. So, we faxed, we didn't email it, we faxed that information collected to the city central, city of Bowling Green. So, our Walnut Grove Neighborhood Association really never, to my knowledge, got any direction or response from that request on that specific item. So, I simply want to bring to the attention of this body on how Edgewood and South Park Drive not only gets on the list for a sidewalk, but gets some attention to this matter so as it not to be dropped through the cracks with whatever the process is. So, I'm very glad to be the contact for any communication that needs to take place for this process of actually getting on a sidewalk on Edgewood and South Park Drive. So, thank you for your time. And I'm going to give you this packet that's got my contact information and an actual copy of the documents that we did send back in '09.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. Appreciate you being here. Oh, okay. Thanks. Else? No one else? We'll move on to the items for consideration, which is the second reading of ordinance BG 2. I'm sorry, go. We haven't got to it yet. Come on, come on up. I thought, I thought I asked anyone else. I didn't see anybody step up. And your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Toby Fatsinger. I reside at 1035 Kentucky Street. Afternoon. As I mentioned, I'm a resident at 1035 Kentucky Street in downtown Bowling Green. I am an audio engineer, and I run a state-of-the-art recording studio called Voia House. We produce music and imaging for local, regional, and national radio stations and recording artists. I'm here today because I am concerned about how the lack of fairness legislation for our LGBT residents may adversely affect my business. We are the third-largest city in Kentucky and the only one of those top three that has yet to even add the topic of fairness to a city commission agenda. In addition to my concern for the plight of my fellow LGBT residents, I'm concerned about how our great city will continue to be perceived following a continued failure to openly and publicly discuss reasonable legislation aimed toward protecting all of our citizens and visitors. I would love nothing more than to contribute to economic development in Bowling Green by encouraging my clientele to shop local, frequent local eateries, and stay at local hotels while they are in town using my studio services. Unfortunately, I've been unable, as of yet, to assure my clients with unequivocal certainty that they will not be refused service or patronage based on their sexual preference or identity because we lack the legislation necessary to provide this assurance. As a result, I have, I actually have lost business to studios in Louisville, Lexington, and Nashville, right in the center. A lot of these people come out of town, from out of town. A lot of these people look to escape the rat race of Nashville to come up here and record. These are people with spending dollars that can contribute to our economic development in our city. Since relocating to the area in 2014, my family and I have absolutely fallen in love with Bowling Green. And it's a refreshing mix of community involvement, hospitality, agriculture, intellectualism, and creativity. Having traveled the world over, we have found our city's residents to be some of the nicest people we've ever met, and we've learned that if there's one thing that Kentuckians understand, it is fairness. That is why I am here today, to ask you to adhere to the requests of the many businesses and residents who have asked you to take up this conversation of fairness time and again. Please listen to your constituents. While I would love to see fairness legislation passed, I am here today primarily to ask you to have an open and public conversation regarding this issue. I am asking you to quite simply do your job. I am asking you to stop failing your constituents and place the issue of fairness on the city commission's agenda so it can be discussed by our elected city officials in public forum. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right, thank you. First item for consideration is second reading of ordinance BG 2016, number four.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning two tracts of land containing 0.3736 acre from LI Light Industrial to RM4 multifamily residential located at 101 15th Avenue, presently owned by Plan B Holdings LLC.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Williams, second by Dunning. It's the second reading. We had an opportunity to consider it last time. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2016, number five.
Ordinance Relating to Budget Amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Williams. Call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-15.
Municipal Order Approving the Probationary Appointment of Zachary W. Hurst to the Position of Landscape Gardener in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved. Second.
By Williams, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFebbo?
Thank you, Mayor. We had an opening, as it reads here, in the Landscape Gardener Division of Park and Rec. We publicly advertised. We had 52 people apply that wanted to work for us. 33 met the minimum quals. We interviewed seven, and from that process, we distilled that Zachary Hurst was probably the best and appropriate person to hire. I believe that Zachary is here. He has both private departmental as well as private experience. Zach, could you stand?
Questions, Zach? Look forward to your work. Any further discussion, comments? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Phil?
I'm sorry, Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-16.
Municipal Order Approving the Probationary Appointment of Stephen J. Smith to Position of Senior Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we had an opening in Parks, and this involved the first level of management, a crew leader position. We had 30 people apply. 24 were initially qualified. Seven were interviewed. And from that distillation, we believe that Stephen J. Smith is the best person for the position. Mr. Smith has two years' experience with the city, as well as a complement of private experience. I believe Mr. Smith is here.
Congratulations. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-17.
Municipal Order Approving the Continuation of Agreements for Local and Out-of-Town Card Fuel Service with Valor LLC and Bulk Fuel Supply Services with Keet Oil Company.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo?
Thank you, Mayor. A number of years back, we did a collaboration with BGMU and WKU to purchase cooperatively fuel. That was done in 2013. Under the terms of the collaboration, we have four two-year recontracts for that service. We're here tonight to ask you to execute the first two-year term. We're pretty happy with the service. The collaboration is good, and we would recommend continuation of the partnership, as well as the products and service.
Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-18.
Municipal Order Approving the Bowling Green Police Department Flooring Project Through Non-Competitive Negotiations with Contractors Floor Covering of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the Amount of $51,135.67.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFebbo?
We're interested in putting new carpeting in Police Department. As you can imagine, it's somewhat of a high-traffic area, given all the activity there. We went out to public bid, and no one submitted a bid. We discovered there were some reasons why, none of which were our fault. So, pursuant to our own purchasing policy, we are unfettered to go out and do non-competitive negotiations. Our purchasing staff has done that, and we're here today to ask you to allow us to hire contractors floor covering of Bowling Green to install the requisite carpet in the Police Department.
Any questions or discussions? Furniture?
I think it had to do with the burden of getting the bond. That's not a thing.
Getting what?
A bond, a bonding. We require bonding. If we go out to bid, and not every carpet person has bonding-type capacity, so.
And don't complete the...
Right. So, we've got to manage this especially cautiously.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-19.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2015-30 for Business License Software from Harris Govern, Division of Harris Computer Systems of Plano, Texas, in the amount not to exceed $355,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Mr.?
Thank you, Mayor. More than 10 years ago, Davis Cooper, as we remember, exploited a hole in our software for our business occupation and property tax system to steal money. Over the past number of years, we've been trying to, as you can see, to find the right, we corrected that gap, by the way, and we've been trying to find a requisite software to provide us the type of service we need to go forward for both our occupation, as well as our property tax. Lynn, as well as Jeff, put together a cross-departmental team to look at this. And we're here today, after many years of discernment and saving money, to ask you to purchase the needed software we have for our property tax and our occupation tax, which is Harris Govern out of Plano, Texas. Lynn is here. If you have any questions, I understand we don't spend $355,000 every day for software. But I can tell you that we have vetted this properly over multiple years. Jeff can add his info monitor to it, as well as Lynn can give a description if you like.
This is accounting software, not, not just security software, right?
Correct.
Lynn, please.
Essentially, as Kevin said, KVS software was here way before my time. It's very old and dated. Back in '07, the decision was made to try to get consolidated, integrated ERP system that would get rid of a lot of disparate systems that we had, serving HR and finance. New World Systems was implemented at the time in '07. Took about a two-year timeframe. Unfortunately, they did not have an occupational tax module with the software. And the company they partnered with to provide that option, it just, it would have been a step backwards. It wasn't a good solution. So, we've continued on with KVS just for the occupational tax and property tax. We've been having a number of conversations, Jeff and I, finance, over the last few years, and primarily because of things like, it's sitting on a very old database platform, so there's some manual processes that have to take place to get it to feed into New World. There's some audit concerns. There's also just kind of limited functionality. And then also, more recently, the parent, KVS was bought out by another company, and then that company was also subsequently bought. So, we're kind of like two parent companies now. And anytime that happens, you just don't know what, you know, what may be coming next. So, we didn't want to be forced into a timeframe of having to get off of it. So, we did go out on bid, and we got the two bids. Harris seems to be very configurable software. It will automatically talk to New World without the manual processes. Also have some added features, like we'll be able to finally get some things out on the website, so. the website, so people can do things interactive for themselves without having to come in. So let's kind of.
Just, I hear your question. Yes, it's designed to do the function of the department, to collect the money and account for it. It's more than security. That's, yes, it is a usable product that will help us bring in the money. Jeff, you want to add anything?
Just, this software is our tool to collect $45 million a year in occupational taxes, and we've had this existing system now for 20 years. It's old. We can't do anything online. We can't accept any payments, electronic payments, online. But this new system offers that functionality. It's going to hopefully talk to the New World system a lot better. Right now, we've had to, we have to manually download the day's worth of work into New World at the end of the day before we go home. This type setup would be an automated thing. At midnight of every night, we would, it'd automatically generate a report. And we've, like Kevin said, we've been looking for something since probably 2007, and I bet we've looked at four or five, six different companies, and every time we've looked at them, it's like, we're going backwards here. We don't want to go backwards. We want to move forward. We want to add things. We want to improve our position. And after looking at this company now for, what, six months or so, over and over, we feel like this is the best we're ever going to find and get. And we think we can be more efficient with it. We can offer the public more. Somebody can go online and do a business registration with this software where they can't now. Either you've got to mail it in or walk it in. A lot of new opportunities with this, and we're excited about it.
One other quick point, too. On security, there will be more opportunities for logging events and having reports and things that, for instance, Deborah Jenkins can get in and see. So a lot more accountability, I guess.
I think it's great y'all have done your due diligence and didn't just jump at the first, first one that came along. So, long time coming.
You know, hopefully this one's good for another 20 years, like the old one was. So if you take this and amortize it over 20 years, it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, that's not bad.
One more, one more thing, though, is the property tax is, we decided, we think we can build that into the New World system. And so someone would be able to go online and see their, see a parking ticket, a property tax bill, or alarm permit, or whatever, all together, hopefully, soon.
Yeah, there have been some, we originally went out to replace both modules with the new software, but there have been enough enhancements in New World in the last year or so that two staffs, IT and finance, worked together and made sure that it would work. We actually took last year's data, fed it through, and everybody was satisfied with that. So we were able to do that internally and keep that in New World, so that Harris software would just be for the occupational tax.
One final point. Lynn is modeling the new football colors for the University of Alabama today, so I thought I would.
And I'm colorblind. I can still see that tone.
I was concerned if the lights went out. I wanted to. It'll be on the season.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2016, 20.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of WebTrack software for the Parks and Recreation Department from Vermont Systems of Essex Junction, Vermont, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Mr.
Thank you, Mayor. Parking Rec Department currently use what is known as Vermont Systems of Essex Junction in Vermont to do the Workhurst, Workhorse software programming for the department. We want to improve that by adding a module known as WebTrack to allow our citizens to directly interface with the city, to make reservations online, to accept payments. This is a frontier we've needed to do for a while, and we're here to ask you to continue to use Vermont Systems and add the WebTrack. Little Brenton's here, if you have any questions.
Questions? Call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2016, 21.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting 201634, bid number 201634, for HP Desktop PC Replacement Project from Soft Choice Corporation of Chicago, Illinois, and CDW Government LLC of Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount, total amount of $212,528.
So moved.
Motion by Williams and second by Perigin. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. We're committed to having a modern IT department and use modern computers and software. We're here to ask you to allow us to purchase up to $212,000 of PCs and workstations as part of our general upgrade plan for employees' computers. Went out to bid, and we are using what we believe to be the best choice, which is Soft Choice of Chicago and CDW, which is out of Illinois. Lynn is here. There were seven bidders. We believe these two are the cheapest and the best. If you have any question, Lynn can explain it better than I.
Questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2016, 22.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Soft Choice, with Soft Warehouse International of Dallas, Texas, under the Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of Microsoft Office products in an amount not to exceed $82,548.60.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams.
These PCs need software to make them go, and the main software most of us use is Microsoft Office. We're here to ask you to use the state contract to purchase approximately $83,000 worth of Microsoft Office products. Again, this is an upgrade, and Lynn is here. If you have any questions?
Part of Texas here, aren't we?
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Away from computers here for a minute. Order 2016, 23.
Municipal order authorizing city staff to obtain quotes and the city manager to approve the emergency purchase and structural repairs to Bowling Green Fire Station Number One in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Dinning, second by Williams.
During that major snowstorm where we're all at home weeding out the storm, our firemen were at work, and one of our firemen got a quite abrupt good morning as a car came off Fairview Avenue and went right through the wall of the main fire station. Luckily, no one, thankfully, no one was injured, but we have to repair the hole. We're here to ask you to allow us to use about $50,000 to go out and find someone who will fix that hole for us. We believe we have a number of people who would be interested in doing that, but this municipal order allows us to declare an emergency and to spend 50 grand to repair the hole. Brian O'Callaghan, Chief Brian O'Callaghan's here. Is he any questions?
I think it's an emergency. Are we, we are pursuing the driver's insurance?
If any. I believe so, but I'm told there is none. Correct, you know?
That's my understanding. He's uninsured. We are turning it over to our insurance company. They should be reimbursing us, and we will let them pursue the person who did that, those damages. We'll turn it over to KLC for our insurance coverage. We've been told he is uninsured.
People shouldn't be driving uninsured, especially in a situation like that.
And even more so, not going the wrong way on Fairview.
Yeah.
I want to know if anybody was in the building when the car hit.
Yes, there was Jerry Stahl, one of our assistant chiefs, who was asleep, and thankfully, he was not injured.
That might have startled him.
Comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2016, number six.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 2.65 acres from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at 110, 124, and 138 Oddly Avenue, presently owned by Charles and Barbara English.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Dinning, second by Perigin. Mr. Fibo, is any other comments?
Steve McWhorter is here, if you have any questions. Generally, most of the information is found in your packet, so Steve is just here to, for commentary.
Full planning and zoning packet in our material. Any comments or questions for Mr. McWhorter? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
First reading of ordinance BG 2016, number seven.
All right, bear with me. Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016C, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $26,310,000 for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of, one, the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation public project bond, Series 2008A, the proceeds of which finance the costs of the construction and installation of a baseball stadium and related approved public infrastructure costs; and, two, the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation public project bond, Series 2008B, the proceeds of which finance the costs of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of the Greenwood Fire Station and the expansion of the Fire Department Headquarters and Airport Fire Station. Approving the form of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with a state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, authorizing acceptance of the bid of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
All righty then.
Motion by Dinning.
I'll second it.
Second by Williams. I think we all completely understand that that was about the most accurate description.
In addition to that, to give some background, as you, at our recent retreat, staff gave the commission and the public an overview of our financial situation and where we're going in the future. We operate by a series of financial goals. Number one is we always live within our means. We don't look at budgeting as a matter of fitting our wants into what we can get in terms of revenue. We live with the revenue we're given. We try not to take on debt unless we absolutely have to. And finally, we watch our cost of money. Tonight, we're here to act on reducing the cost of money. Our CFO, Jeff Mizel, in his role, is, worked many times to go out and to find cheaper financing, and we're here to refinance the ballpark that we're responsible for, as well as a number of expansions and improvements to our various fire stations. I think it'd be important for Jeff to take a victory lap and to explain to you some of the things, what's going on here. Jeff?
Take all the credit. We have a good financial advisor, which will be your next item on your agenda. It's Raymond James in Nashville. We work close together on this kind of stuff. Watch it. But this, this is a good opportunity because, you know, the original bonds were issued in '08 for the ballpark, and average rate on those is about 4.9%. So today's rates are a lot better than that. We think we can get somewhere between the 2.5% and 3% range. So it's like refinancing your house. It's, that's, that's a lot of basis points. So a lot of that good savings there. Same thing with the fire stations. This was the Greenwood Station, the airport, and the fire headquarters with the admin building. We've got about a 4.5% average rate on those, and those were only 20-year bonds. But again, we can get down in the 2s on that with some good savings to the Fire Improvement Fund. Even though this is an advanced refunding, these aren't callable till 2018, this is still net savings. The net present value savings is somewhere going to be between $3 and $3.5 million. That's with the time value of money and everything, net of all costs and everything. So when you see this summary here and you see the forecasted net present value savings percentage of 14.2%, is, that's pretty ridiculously good. You usually want to see something over 3 or 5%. So this blows that out of the water. So even with the advanced refunding, we think it's, it's the good time to do it. Don't know what the rates are going to do in the next 12 months, and we're hoping to get these sold by the end of this month, tentatively scheduled for February 29th, Leap Day. So cross your fingers, hope rates hold for another 30 days, and we'll get this thing done. So.
Great work, but want to remind everybody that it doesn't extend the term of the loan.
It does not. 2038, still the same maturity on the ballpark, and 2028 on the fire stations.
And it doesn't increase the amount of money that we're borrowing. It's just paying off the current debt with refinancing.
I want to thank Jeff for keeping an eye on, you know, for opportunities like this. That's just great.
This may be the last one we have for a while, so this has just happened to be in the group that was ripe for the picking, so.
Thank you. Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And municipal order 2016, 24.
Municipal order approving and authorizing agreement with Raymond James and Associates Incorporated to serve as financial advisor for the City of Bowling Green related to the refunding of all or a portion of the outstanding City of Bowling Green, excuse me, City of Bowling Green General Obligation Public Project Bond, Series 2008A, and the outstanding City of Bowling Green General Obligation Public Project Bonds, Series 2008B.
So moved.
Second.
By Williams, second by Perigin.
The standard protocol for this type of refinancing is to hire a financial advisor. We have had a relationship with Raymond James out of Nashville. I think you met the principle a number of times here. So this municipal order authorized us to hire them and to move forward with refinancing. Jeff, you want to add anything to that?
Comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2016, 25.
Municipal order ratifying execution of declaration of a local state of emergency related to the January 22nd, 2016 severe snowstorm.
So moved.
Second.
Williams, second by Perigin.